We have a call. There were one here, Sherry's on the phone. I don't know. Will not make it. But there are one else here. This is twenty twenty six by June.
This is gonna be like an education for the board where people are not gonna approve anything today. We're just kinda go, kinda go over estimate, what I put together for the proposed budget. And we'll go over this same thing at the board meeting in two weeks. So if you look at the first column, it's what we approved for last year's budget. The middle column is what, estimate of what we collected this year. Because I haven't paid all the rest of it through the end of September. And we haven't collected all of our income for the rest of September. So this is just gonna be your right estimate. And then the last column is what's proposed for next year. So if you look at the first line, the Excel energy tax allocation. We collected six hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-seven cents less this year than what we budgeted for last year. And I have no idea why either one of those tax allocations are less. They, they go down every year. If you look at budget history over the last four or five years, they continue to go down. And so we have, I'm budgeting for this year exactly what we collected this year. And so Agnes' tax allocation was seven-three dollars and eighty-three cents less this year. So our utility income for next year, I budgeted fourteen thousand six eighty-three ninety. Property tax collections, last year we budgeted twenty thousand fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents. We collected seventeen thousand three twenty-nine forty-five. Part of that is, we still had the month of August and the month of September to collect. Historically.
Sherry? Sherry?
Yes.
Can you mute that for us, please? I mean, you used to mute yours, but...
And then unmute it if you have a question. And so, two thousand six eighty-five eighty-six is what the deficit that we have so far this year. There's people that don't pay their property taxes, we can't do anything about that. So we just have to go with whatever's collected. The proposed number for twenty twenty-five is the formula that Randall County gives us for our tax increase. And our tax increase.
This is Sherry.
I love work. I mean, I truly love the work on that shift that is felt like the sleep schedule.
Oh, that's for sure.
At day, this is the longest he's seen me in, two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we work for these two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Not, oh, my dad, not my dad, rotates shifts. And man, he has kids. Cause we come through, send them to my mom, they're going, shh. And he, he woke up, alright, I suppose.
That's right, you did that for a while. Yeah, I did it for thirty-five years.
He had four kids, so.
Yeah, I did it for thirty-five years, that's why I'm different. I would be more hangover with a little house and hang with my kids. Where, you know, from there to the hospital when I was working all that shit.
I'm gonna send him papers working nights right now.
She's like, please.
The video crap that I was doing.
That's what he's doing, he's going too fast on that shift. Then he just worked a lot of nights and nights. You know, the older he gets, the more, he gets home, I'm like, don't disturb her. I think he's worked lots on, and actually his last two shifts, he's worked, he's ended up working all night. Then last Thursday he came home and we had something we had to do that morning. And he had to work that afternoon in Hill City, he was exhausted. This morning, he's off, completely off today. I said, you know what, just sleep until you feel like getting your bloody head. Yeah, but yeah, that's a big adjustment. And you gotta house for the kids, too.
Yeah, they're all over now. But they're still, but they're still in it now. But, you know, I put my earplugs in. And, but I leave this on for work. So really what wakes me up is spam calls and then work. So. Not my neighbors.
Oh, good.
So, does anybody know who I can call? Sherry might have a number, do you have a number anywhere for this Excel or Agnes? That, that's on text you?
Michael, that's my.
I'm curious as to why, you know, seventy-three dollars less isn't a whole lot from Agnes. But six hundred and seventy-six dollars is a pretty good bit from Excel. I wonder why every year for the last four years is progressively, our allocations are actually a little less.
When we're building, more people are living down here.
I don't think that would make our allocation go up possibly.
You have, you have a number or someone?
And Michael would probably run Walker and Excel.
Well, I'm curious, I want enough money for four years in the road fight on that. Cause I said seventy-three dollars isn't anything. Seventy-three dollars is a pretty good little amount.
Have you all been to the, the, the last two months?
Ours was almost seventy-four last month.
I've never had such a lucky, I guess I got an increase back in June. I mean, I got three hundred and thirty-three dollar bill, I've never had over two hundred.
This is a high start, so we work in a week, days or something.
I'm missing some, so it's much more, you know.
Something, every single week.
You were hot. Well, yeah, but you know what? We left our furnace done sixteen hours at home time. How did we do that? I don't know, it should've, we should've been on seventy-two, thirty hours. Yeah, we should've come to my house, it was bloody cold. Gosh, I don't know, I don't really know where our bills are, cause they can pay some unless he's out the country and pays them. And then just let him, I've got enough stuff to do and he likes to keep his fingers on all that, so. I don't, I don't really know what ours are.
A hundred dollars off of the average, well, over what last summer was.
It's been covered this summer.
I don't know, we had that long night spring and, you know, cruises, all this second week.
Yeah, and it wasn't even that many days at a time.
No, it was two, no.
Yeah.
Two so far this year. That's it, usually, you know, May came and May, we're syncing up on June, July for sure, ten hundred.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We had a wonderful, wonderful temperature.
When you was driving, came white.
Yeah.
Right here. That's about the shooting over there.
Um, we've heard, you've done heard gunshots?
No.
The SGA's.
At the same time, at the same time, we were just across the line. There was a canyon that goes back up in there, a pretty big little ways and they were shot. So I walked down at the water, I went down to, to.
James.
Yeah, James Webb's house and it's coming from that canyon over there. They were shooting a pretty big caliber, there wasn't pistols, rifle, they were shooting a big caliber rifle in the canyon. They shot it probably twelve or fourteen times in about a thirty or forty minute period. I mean, it was cracking through the canyon, I don't know, they both.
Yes, Sherry, it was in the afternoon, Friday or Saturday, it was at night.
It wasn't a pistol, it was a rifle. So it wasn't a little, neither, it wasn't twenty-two or two-twenty-three, it was a big rifle, off-six or something like that. They were real, took the canyon out there, everybody could write down about it. Kind of, they shouldn't have, they had that before the canyon, they own this canyon and it just got worn. It was a real, real, real safe place to do that, but I'm sure the fair price to acres from that.
Is that part two?
Yeah, I'll be there, that's there, so I can't think of a guy saying that out to the hills. Twenty, twenty-five acres on that setup. North shore, there, and he owns that canyon, he had his little target right set up there, they make it take it. It sounded like it was coming up from there. Yeah, the first time it went off, I was outside, hoping, oh, that's a big rifle. I don't know, that is, it's very. But, I can't imagine why else they'd call them. And we got two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars less than, less property taxes, that's a great hit. That's because people did not pay their property taxes. Cause we don't get what we get paid in, right? If, the number we get to work with every year is if everybody pays their taxes.
Right, and we still have two months, we still have a month of August and September to go. So that's why it says estimate collected. So we may get more than that. That's gonna help us.
You been over there, over the road?
Yeah, I've talked to Sherry. Is it anything to be improved today?
Uh, nah, I mean, I talked to Lyle. He said that he bought property like Wednesday at best. He said I landed on that hill road and I think I tripped.
And I have something to do tomorrow.
I think I'm right, I might get it right now, but either way it's good, but I haven't been over there, but.
I was on, I tried to back to town, check. But it's two days away.
Yeah.
That's what we're through.
Yeah. They had all the, that's all broke out though, Randy, you've ever sent me a video. They had everything broke out. I thought they were ready for basement two, or maybe they were on that, so they're bringing some basement two, when they like to try it. So, that'd give you a tricky, they went on that basement two, and I had that in the water for all.
I guess the water's thin, let's go on water.
I don't think, someone that landed high. South side. The dog, yeah.
The house.
Yeah, with the house, but they still on there. They were, well, sometimes, okay, they're gonna rebuild, but, you know, that was eight or ten years ago. And it's all over that now. There's actually trees growing where their house was, pretty good sized, trees growing, so. I don't know, okay, we have to take those in. That's not an equal spot.
You were like, sure.
Fully to that layer.
Kind of, you see out?
Yeah, that's nice, we're on top there, kind of do a little piece of property. Or somebody did something over there, grab, sure, you got it, maybe. Maybe everybody's laying over there, maybe somebody did something.
I started crying.
Yeah, right. Get involved, they're quick, they dropped it off there, so it's not real, real private. I just realized there's nothing that it's. I don't think there is anything there.
I'll talk to the chief, we'll, we'll get it to my over there then, and then I'll handle that one, um, on the.
Can you make sure it's John? Well, she texted me and said, I'll use here.
Okay, there you are, are you on now? Okay. I had a little problem, I had to get take care of. Okay.
Okay, so we're, the property tax collection, the proposed amount is the formula that Randall County gave us. So we're anticipating twenty thousand six forty ninety-four in property taxes. Permit income, we generally budget five hundred, we collected six hundred and five, collected at five hundred. Other income, I've worked on this Thursday and Friday. And so the only thing different on here, village property sales. I'll add that we got a check from Nathaniel and Lily for a thousand seventy-one dollars on that land. So that will increase the other income. I don't ever budget anything, cause we can't depend on anything in this category. So we'll leave it at zero. Security gate pods, I don't ever budget, because we've never known for a year to do, how many pods we're gonna sell. We sold five hundred last year, so we keep it at zero. Contributions for twenty thousand. Sherry, could you put your phone on mute?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I haven't been called out about a lot.
Santa's horse is.
Sounds like there's an animal.
Okay, contributions, I don't ever budget anything for that, cause again, we don't, can't depend on it. We've got nine hundred and eighty dollars for road contributions this year, so we'll leave it at zero for next year. Same thing for community center income, we don't ever budget, because we don't know how much we're gonna rent. Rent income, five hundred and fifty dollars we collected this year, nothing for next year. So our total income, what we have to focus on is what our proposed budget is for next year. Thirty-five thousand eight twenty-four eighty-four. So it's like, I think I forget it, it's like a hundred and ninety dollars, a hundred and twenty dollars more this year than last year. So our expenses, here's where we have to do a little homework on the next page. Village court expense, we did not visit anything for this year. We spent a hundred and fifty dollars, that was for Sue Sims. Um, she had to do some continuing education for her license. And so, and I just paid that, so it's a hundred and fifty dollars. And I'm gonna, uh, her amount, what are you looking at, don't need to go now. Sorry.
Okay, okay. Are you just doing a couple of, okay?
Yes.
For one, two fifty.
Two fifty, okay. That's why I'm gonna do a little bit of that over the other night. I'm gonna score that, two fifty on the court expense. And so we're gonna budget, since she, sorry, let me back up. Court training was the hundred dollars that Sue Sims had to go for her continuing education. We have a ordinance violation that she's gonna preside over in the next couple of weeks. It will go out of this year's budget and that, her, her cost is a hundred and fifty dollars. So we already budgeted that. So she's not gonna need any training, she said, for next year, so we're not budgeting anything for that. I have the court expense, we're gonna increase to four, I'm recommending we increase to four hundred and fifty dollars. Ordinance, ordinance enforcement expenses, we budgeted four hundred. And we only spent a hundred and forty-eight of that, since we're gonna do more ordinance enforcement next year. I'm proposing that we go up to four hundred. Security cameras, we budgeted three hundred for the internet. And that's what we spent on the internet, I'm saying, recommending we keep that and that for next year. Security gate equipment, that fourteen thousand one eighty-one was income for the new gate. We didn't budget that, it didn't cost us anything, that was just a pass through.
Also the insurance deal, okay.
Yeah. PNL original funding commission, communication system, PNC. Uh, keeping it exactly the same amount for the PNC payments and our dues to PRDC. Road and traffic department, safety light, the gate, the light of the flower bed, we budgeted three hundred and fifty. I still have August and September to pay, so it's only three hundred and one, so I'm proposing we do three fifty. We're gonna skip roads for right now. On to the next page, village entrance, materials for entrance, that's if we need lights or anything. Or the structure of the entrance, we budgeted fifty, we didn't spend anything, I say, keep it at fifty. Uh, nothing for contracted work with the flower bed, we always budget two hundred for flowers and stuff. Dennis and Dardo Paquette still maintain it at no cost as, so I'm gonna keep it at two fifty. Because we don't know how, they'll continue doing that from year to year. Tax collection expenses, this is what Randall County charges us to collect our taxes, six seventy-five for this year. I'm proposing we do it for next year. Pratt services, we budgeted two-ten, we paid two twenty-four, so I say, keep it at two twenty-four. Legal notice, we have to put an advertisement in the newspaper when we do our tax reg. We budgeted a hundred, and I just put it in the newspaper for last weekend. And she thought it would be around eighty dollars, I don't have a bill yet, so I'm gonna keep it at eighty. Election expenses, we budgeted twenty-five hundred. I thought, and I didn't get the bill from Shane and Laki, I talked to her this morning. And she resent the bill and it's only thirteen hundred dollars instead of twenty-five. So that's twelve hundred dollars more that we have to spend this year. Government agency fees, all of these are standard fees, pretty much every year. And the only thing I increased was our ten mental membership dues from six seventy to six eighty-five. Uh, professional fees, legal fees, we budgeted four thousand. We spent five thousand three hundred and eighty dollars in suggesting that we do five thousand for next year. And we really need each week to send us a bill every quarter. This getting a bill at the end of the year is really hard to come up with. And, and we don't have a clue what her bill is gonna be. And it catches us off guard at the end of the year when we're planning to do road work or any kind of work around here.
How long was it between bills for her?
December was the last bill that we got from her.
Eight months.
Yeah, and she says that she's really bad about sending out bills, but we have to do something.
Can I ask some pressure on her?
Yeah.
I think you need.
Even, even her boss is her upset with her. She's not for sending the bill, they don't know what's going on, she has that dirt here. Yes.
We can't do this, a bill at the end of the year, a magnitude of four thousand dollars. Okay, village facilities, last year we budgeted thirty-five hundred for cleanup. We spent almost three thousand, two thousand three hundred, say, and we keep it at thirty-five hundred. Cause if we can do the extra roll-offs during the year, I think that really helps. Because every time we do them, they're over.
Right.
And then we budgeted a hundred and twenty for food, we only spent fifty-eight, I say we keep it at a hundred and twenty. And by, if you look at our, what we spent this year and what we're proposing for next year. Some of those numbers I inflate a little bit for cushion. And that really helps to have that cushion, especially when we get a bill for Angela that's that high. Harden?
Would you have to follow us?
Oh, I'm looking over his shoulder. I know he does, I mean, it, this, I'm just tucking, I'm just letting stuff down, I don't make any decisions. Okay, operating, operating expenses, postage, office supplies, flags. And we're keeping pretty much the same. Our internet services are a little bit of an issue this year. We usually budget three hundred dollars for the gentleman that does all of our internet stuff. And he is the kindest little gentleman that I've known for thirty years. And I'll ask him, I need a bill for this year, oh, don't worry about it, don't worry about it. And so I don't worry about it. And this year we got an eight hundred and sixty-seven. And it's because he has almost died three times. He has lots of health issues. And he said, billing people for his services just has not been in the top of his list of things to do. And so he's playing catch-up, I guess, for work. He might really pass anyway. The cost is, there's two different costs. One of them is like a hundred and fifty dollars and the other one's nineteen. And both of them are charges to host our website. And it's not any charges for him whatsoever, it's the hosting fees that he gets. And so that's what we're paying, playing catch-ups.
What was eight hundred and?
Sixty-seven twenty-five, catches us up.
How many years?
Five years.
Five years or?
Five years, yeah.
Five years, we're not paying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, correct. And so I have on my calendar, in July, already up it on my calendar to remind you to send us an email bill. So that we get it at the end of year. So we're gonna budget for three hundred.
So that three hundred you got budgeted, in reality, it should only be five divided into that eight sixty-seven?
No, because there's, no, it, his, his doesn't equate out like that. The charges will be around maybe two twenty-five a year. Uh-huh, yeah, and I just budgeted for three hundred in case the web services go up.
So none of that's a way?
None of that's his charge, he's not charging us a dime. This is all web hosting fees. And then Constant Contact is our email service, I budgeted one seventy-five. We paid twelve dollars and sixty-five, and that is on the, same, we keep it at one sixty. Insurance, PNL, we budgeted forty, four thousand three hundred. We spent forty thousand three oh seven, I say, we keep it at forty-four hundred. Excel, the interest, the electric bill for the community center, we budgeted eleven hundred. We've spent nine hundred so far, and we still have a month of August and September to go. So I'm saying, we're gonna do one hundred. Repairs and projects for the community center, we budgeted fifteen hundred. We didn't spend anything, we're gonna talk about that fifteen hundred in a minute. Community center supplies, that's like cleaning supplies and paper towels and paper plates. We budgeted sixteen, or we didn't budget anything, we spent sixteen twenty-two, I'm saying, we budgeted twenty-five for next year. Discretionary account, we budgeted a thousand, we didn't spend any, we're gonna talk about that again. So if you look at the bottom, everything that's not in yellow totals eighteen thousand nine ninety one. So the difference between the first page of thirty five thousand eight twenty four eighty four, we have sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty three dollars and eighty four cents left to spend that's not allocated above. So if you look at what I highlighted in yellow, community center repairs, fifteen hundred dollars. I'm saying we put that back in the budget. Discretionary account, we didn't spend anything this year, I'm saying we put that thousand dollars back. That leaves us fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty three dollars for road repairs. And so if you take that eighteen thousand nine ninety one, add all that up, it equals thirty five eight twenty four eighty four, which is what our income is, and those two figures have to match. And so what we have room to play with here are those three items. And we can add a thousand seventy one, not really, we have to look at, that's collected. So we have about maybe two thousand more that we're gonna collect this year. Which if we need to do any more road repairs, we could possibly do that. So what y'all have to decide this board at the meeting, next, in two weeks, is do you wanna do these three amounts differently? Because everything else on here is pretty much set, except those three items.
Personally, I think the community center, we ought to keep it lit at, because there's, I mean, we were lucky this year that we didn't lose water here or have a fan built out somewhere or need to do some kind of repair somewhere. When it get broken, door get kicked in, there's just.
Water on the bus or something.
That's right. We keep that at fifteen hundred. The discretionary, I'm, yeah, that's, I think that's actually kind of a lot of discretionary, but we've managed to dance around that for the last couple of budgets, which is good, which is good. So I'm, I'm with that, that fourteen grand for road repairs, we're striking.
The, the good thing is, we don't have an election this year, so that saves us what we usually budget, twenty five hundred dollars. We have to do that every other year when we have an election. And if you look at the bottom line, we budgeted thirty five thousand nine fifty. And with, with the difference in, the election, twelve hundred dollars plus the thousand dollars for the lean that we sell, we collected fifty four thousand dollars when we only budgeted thirty five thousand. Fifty two thousand and we budgeted thirty five thousand. Some of that is because we put money in savings. We put all the pot money that we give in savings. And when we're a little heavy in our checking account, I try to look at that and anticipate if we don't have any big bills coming up, we can move that to savings. And so I, I think we have a good attrition going into next year.
That fifty two thousand seven hundred and seventy four that is spent in twenty twenty four, the reason that is so lopsided from that to the proposed is the fourteen grand for the gate?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we took, yeah.
Yeah.
If we took fourteen grand out of that fifty two, we're going all the way closer to that thirty five.
But we're still, we collected more than we budgeted. I haven't figured it out.
We just do about two gates over there, levers too.
If we can sell later, or we all be a brand.
Branding for, but he's just probably sitting over and weeds.
What's the difference?
You know.
Do fifty two seven seven four fourteen? And take fourteen one eighty one.
Thirty eight five.
So three thousand more.
Thirty eight five nine eight three, so, yeah. Okay.
I'm looking, they want to keep, for the, I, I like Plandals as a kid.
You what?
I like Plandals as a kid though. Okay, we got lucky this year, we didn't spend the money on the community center, but.
Yeah, it's a blessing if you don't have to spend it.
Who has a long, you get a major house torn around. But they don't have the gold, they don't have the gold.
So the question is, at the end of the year, after we pay everything, a, a, a lot of people are under the misconception that we get thirty eight thousand to start the year. We do not get thirty, so not February first. That comes in, quarterly payments for the utilities, monthly payments for the taxes. So if you look back on the very first page, we don't have a lot of income. The top three, utilities, property taxes and permits are really our only income source. Those three things make up our total income.
Yeah, all the rest of this page is just like the draw, somebody dumbs in the roads or somebody gets permits or, or not permits actually, but rents the community center or, and just general dumb action. All that's just stuff you can't count on. So yes, the first three should be.
And I'll call, I'll call Michael Gonzalez and Ronnie Walker and see if they can point out who it figures our tax allocations that we get on a quarterly basis.
For four years they've gone.
I've, I've, I'm guessing that.
They come and get increases from us.
Yeah. We're not gonna increase every year.
So it's seven, for both of them, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars less a year that we get. And it may be a glitch in their system, but you're right, we do need to find out what it is.
Well, thank you, Carol. I'm, I don't have a, I don't see anything anybody else can do.
I, I just got a quick question on the road repairs. Now, we allocated last year oil from twenty five.
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand. And so this year, you're proposing fourteen three thirty three. Um, now, this work that's going on right now is sixteen five?
That's included in that spent.
Okay, spent page?
Uh, this and that.
Now, right here under road repairs, the middle column, eighteen seven eighteen oh three. That's what we spent.
It's eighteen seven, that's the coal patch we bought, that's the wind going on over there for sixteen five.
The speed guns, the stars.
Okay, so the total was eighteen seven, eighteen?
Yeah, that's what we spent this year.
Okay. And so this, this, see, we didn't have to, you didn't have to go into the savings?
No, we have that much of a surplus in our account.
Okay, alright.
So, okay. Well, I'm just, I'm, again, sorry, bear with me.
Wait there.
Okay, well. Would they actually make money making for the pods, all the, everything like that? Is there a way to show that we, I know there's not, but in my head, it's what I want to work. Like, hey, I know you're paying for the pods, I know you're paying for this, you know, this extra stuff. Can we go, hey, look, this is where this extra money came from that we put in back into the roads, kind of thing, off the extra money we took in?
I can do like a summary at the bottom of this, of what we started off with our savings account this year and what we ended with our savings account to show.
Just because I know people are like, well, I gotta buy a pod. I'm like, well, we are putting it back into the roads and we're spending more than what we are budgeting.
And what you need to bridge out on the road bill, that fourteen four eighty one, he, he actually saved us a little money on the new gate. And we were able to buy a hundred more pods and out of that fourteen four eighty one. So those extra hundred pods didn't cost us anything. And when we did the initial pods, when we got the gate to begin with, the pods were five dollars apiece. And we're making twenty off of, off of the pods. This last group that I bought that was a hundred dollars, they're eight dollars a pod now, so they've gone up.
Yeah, you brought that, the three dollars apartment, they cost us more than initially.
Well, actually, it didn't cost us anything because it came out of that insurance.
But they actually went up.
He gives us a little break. And he sells them to us a little bit cheaper than what they are, I think they're right at ten now.
The pods?
If we buy a hundred at a time, we get a little break. People think, how, we'll never go through a hundred. We've gone through two hundred and I just bought a hundred more.
New window.
Yeah, that's what the majority of us is new for.
Well, I, I like the road numbers still. We still have a pretty good say.
So we all don't want to re-allocate anything anywhere.
I love having the little rainy day one.
You bet.
We need a rainy day.
The, the only thing I see is the judges' expense. Um, over four hundred and fifty. I mean, that's only three cases.
Maybe.
For a year.
If we go up on that, we have to go down on something else.
I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I can count free on my hand right, easy right now.
So prediction that maybe we'll have at least three, maybe more.
So we can go with the discretionary fund if we needed to, to cover her?
Are we paying her per use?
Per case.
Per case, okay.
She charges a hundred and fifty per case.
And so we're budgeting four fifty?
Four fifty.
And how many do we have pending now?
One pending.
That, that I put in this year, because it'll pan in September.
I don't know, I'm, if we can, discretionary, um, okay, I don't.
We always have a, a little bit of a buffer in our checking account. So like now, we have close to three thousand dollars in our checking account over what we budgeted.
I don't think we want to do much of court stuff myself.
But if.
I don't really care for it that much, it's not, it's not what we, that's a, I don't, I'll look at it as a very, very varied last resort. We don't wanna, we don't wanna go, that's how I think that's not, if I was a, somebody and it just all of a sudden there was fifty people going to court in our community, we don't want that.
Yeah, we don't want that.
I think one or two of those might set a little bit of a precedence that if your place is just out of control, which is, that's the only ones we're gonna mess with. If it's just out of control, maybe I'll, maybe I'll do something where they are pursuing some of these. I don't think we want to have. And once the word gets around. It will. That they. I hope so. Or make it right, then. Because we don't wanna do that. No. Put a pressure on that. That's not what we wanted to do.
But don't they pay the court cost?
And all the printing and all the postage and.
Myself, I think the three or the four fifty, I think we're right.
Okay.
And just see, that takes a hold of a lot of, that's not something we want to be doing.
It'll be our first full year, and so we need to.
Make it our crowd here. I don't like it. I don't wanna do that, in my hat, sometimes you have to just claim to be the one, but I don't like that hat. I don't like it, because they're a community, I don't think.
The save divides on the flower, is that just electricity? But that light is three hundred dollars a year for that one light?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we just put a solar in there?
Because if you're a flower flag, I thought you had to have illuminated, that's better than all.
Yeah, but wouldn't the solar one do it? You can put it over the pole.
Yeah, the one that I put at the intersection, something like that. I don't know.
See, some of you. I'm not able to put those.
Some of them have it both, when I bought that one for the intersection. It's all in one unit, with the solar pad on top of the light that shines down. They make them, and the solar collectors separate. So we could turn the light upside down and then put the solar thing where we want, so we can make it better.
And what happens if you have five days of no sunshine?
Then it doesn't.
It goes off right.
And then your flag's not illuminating those.
Yeah, but, it's something like that.
Yes. I'm doing this, federal government's not going around. But that's just kind of a patriotic thing.
I think it makes, the entrance to our village look nice and professional.
Yes. They're busy in Washington right now, they don't make the.
I might need someone else here.
Well, that light's shining right in our eyes and not what we're pulling out of there too.
It's okay.
Okay, I think we're good. I'd better let go a little bit.
I'll make a motion if we have a jury.
A second.
On their, any opposed? Alright, thanks everybody. Thanks, Sherry.
Motion, please second that, Mr..
Oh, I'll motion.
Bye bye.
No motion.